June tenth, twenty twenty-one, city council budget hearing. Those that are present are myself, Council McGee, Council McGivern, Council Bacon, Council Enacting Mayor Murphy, Council Tomlin, Council Sullivan, Council Hernandez, Council Anderson Burgos, Council Graney, and Council Lacy, and some will probably come in and I'll announce them as they come in. As we know, the June ninth meeting was moved, and I want to thank Council Leahy. We wanted to help out Mayor Murphy, as well as help out our Personnel Department. So we did an interview last night of that, and then dealt with the interpreter. So we moved the ninth to the, I do believe, the sixteenth, and we kept the tenth. And the agenda is Department of Public Works, Building and Codes, Board of Health and Veteran Services. Veteran Services had a conflict, but they did send in a letter. And I spoke with Jesus Prayer today, who said he'd be happy to come back to answer any questions if need be. But as of right now, he did send a letter in to at least get something to us. Any questions from any of the counselors at this time with regards to budget managers?
I believe you had HR on tonight as well.
And HR, thank you. So with seeing no hands, we'll start with going to the Department of Public Works. Mike McManus is here, and we'll turn it over to him. One, normally we just get an update as to what's going on with the department, what they see for the budget, if anything has changed since the budget was handed in, anything that we should know about, and we'll go from there. Mike, turn it over to you. Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. As far as any changes since the budget was handed in, there hasn't been any really. This year, I did ask for a couple of more positions. Some of them were agreed to by Terry and some were cut. Our expenses, you know, as always, keep going up. Our labor costs keeps going up with union contracts. And then we keep getting asked to do more and more for the city, which we want to do. We want to do a lot more than what we're capable of doing due to manpower. But we try to do our best, and we thank you for your patience and also the patience the city has when we get behind.
All right, so I do believe we start on, if I have the right page, page thirty-two in the budget, Mike? Thirty-one?
Yeah, me share.
Thirty-one?
Twenty-eight, forestry.
Sorry about that. We should never forget forestry. That's the one of the ones we like, like them all. So if we start on page twenty-eight and we'll work from there, going page by page. If counselors have questions on a specific item, or if none, we'll just go on to the next page. So forestry, Department of Forestry. Any questions for Mike on this one?
Like Ian, I just would like to say because of the new, the new equipment vehicle we're having, I think that is going to let us, and I know he put that in his contract to reduce contract forestry services. Because I think John believes he can do more of it. Mike, am I correct on that?
Yeah, and talking with John before, we got the approval for the truck. We haven't gotten the truck yet, but we would commit to do more regular maintenance and removal. Maintenance is something that's really lacking, just general pruning and taking care of our street trees. Removal is also lacking, but with a newer vehicle, we would, we would commit to doing more work out in the city.
When do you see getting that truck, ones that projected to come in?
December, January is what we were told last.
Mr. President?
Counselor Graney?
Just quickly, one quick question on line item five three zero one zero. Just give me a refresher on what that is, contract forestry services?
So that's when we bid out tree work. So if we had Aspland or some other tree company come in to do work for the city on the city's trees, we use that line item.
That seems like a pretty small budget for that item.
I agree.
Okay, just questioning, thank you.
But as Mayor Murphy had stated, with the new vehicle, we feel we can do more in-house. And that's why it's reduced from the twenty-five thousand dollars last year. To the
Okay, thank you.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, on education and training, can you explain what that's for?
That's in case there's a seminar or some training opportunity that's forestry related. A few years ago, the state bid a hazard tree class out in Southampton that we went to, and we would use this to pay for for that.
The state wouldn't put that on for no cost?
No. Through, it's through Bay State Roads.
What's Bay State Roads?
It's a, it's with the UMass Extension. Of course, they've offered a wide variety of public works related training sessions. So that, from taking down trees to filling potholes to complete streets, design, road painting. It's just a way of getting education for DPW people.
All in favor of education, but if the state in UMass is putting it on, I don't get the charge, but that's all right. Mike, we do this every year. The tree climber is not budgeted for. And yet, I think we, even with the new vehicle, I don't think this is a one-person job. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So who works with John?
Other folks who are in parks or the highway department.
Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mike, for coming in tonight. My question is a follow-up for Council McGivern. Is there any way that you're going to be looking for the position of tree climber? Or is it the same situation where there just isn't enough pay for that position?
I feel today there just isn't enough pay for someone to take that position.
Right. Does, and I understand you take from the parks or the the regular department people, but does that adversely affect sometimes the running of the other, you know, getting the parks done or picking up the trash or anything like that?
Not trash, because we'll always prioritize trash. But yes, it could impact our productivity with parks or highways.
Is there a possibility of, I know we talked about Roca before utilizing them, or is it just too dangerous of a position to have somebody work with them on the trees?
Yeah, there's got to be a certain comfort level that John has. I mean, we have some of our own guys he's not comfortable working with just because of attentiveness or some guys move too quick. And yeah, so I think teaming up with Roca, we can explore it. But the guarantee would be using somebody from parks or highways.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone further for page twenty-eight? I'll just make one comment, or actually, one more question. How many trees were we either trimming or taking down through the, you know, outside contracting with twenty-five thousand each year? Sometimes we took from the tree climber way back when, but what were we seeing on an average for trees?
For twenty-five thousand, we would see about four weeks' worth of work, which could be, you know, thirty to forty trees.
And is the thought that the new truck's going to still allow us to get thirty, forty trees a week?
Not a week.
Or, well, it's four, forty, thirty trees for, so ten trees a week. Is we're talking four weeks, thirty to forty trees, that's what we're looking for here during a certain timeframe, or?
Yeah, I would hope you could get more than that. Just because we could work in the spring, summer, and fall. We'd have more time.
Okay. Thank you. Off to the page School Department, thirty-one, City Engineer. Any questions for Mike with regards to this department? Counselor McGivern?
Mike, the position of Senior Civil Engineer, can you just walk me through the history of that? It's kind of recent as being filled?
Yeah, so we'd asked for it last year. It was approved for nine months out of the year. But we weren't authorized to fill the position until a few months ago. We advertised it, and we got a very, very strong candidate with Jim Zack, who has been hired. And this would be the salary for the full year.
It was in the budget last year when we voted on it?
It was in the budget when you voted on it, for nine months out of the year.
Thank you.
Anyone further for Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Mike, the Engineering Assistant DPW Superintendent, ninety-six thousand requested, and ninety-seven thousand was proposed by the mayor. Can you explain that? Seems like another, another four hundred dollars or so?
Yeah, so I think the mayor had more information on what the contractual increase would be at the time that he prepared the budget. Whereas I was working on an assumption of one and a half percent. Their contract hadn't been finalized when I was preparing it. I assumed one and a half percent would be the contractual increase. And maybe, maybe Mr. Murphy knew it'd be more.
Just a timing thing that, it just, it just stands out when you see something more given than that first the department requested. So that's why I asked a question. But if that's the reason, that's fine with me. I just, it's just stood out to see the higher number there.
I do think it's the two percent that is in the contract.
Okay, no problem.
Counselor McGivern?
What, what contract are we talking about?
TSA.
I'm sorry.
The Professional Supervisor Association.
Do you remember when that contract was approved?
Relatively recently. As far as the union is concerned, or the group.
I'm not sure if it's gone before you yet.
Oh, it hasn't.
Well, we can't vote on this if we don't get a copy of the contract. That's going to hold true for this entire budget.
I will try to make sure you get a copy of the contract. I'm assuming it's probably already underway, but I don't know. I know this has just been recent, so, but that's what was being negotiated, so that's, we tried to buy.
Thank you.
Just on that, for Mayor Murphy, if this one hasn't been approved by us, one, we need the contract, but two, just to give Tanya a heads up that those numbers might have to change. Because if they're not approved, we can't put it in the budget until approved. So that's all. I know what you were doing, and that's being proactive, and that's understandable. But that'd be the issue with the budget, if for whatever reason, like it's not filed on Tuesday. These are late file or done tomorrow by twelve, and comes up Tuesday as late file or not voted on at all, we'd have an issue there with those numbers.
I know there are going to be a few late files. I just don't know how many.
No, I'm kidding. Only kidding.
Well, you do know they have to be acted on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Two-thirds vote.
Anyone further for the engineer? All right, seeing none, we'll go to thirty-two. Any questions for Mike on this page?
Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Bacon?
I just have a general question that I want to let our superintendent know before he goes through every page. In general, I'm trying to remember to ask each department head how much their budget that's presenting, that's being presented to us, has increased over the last budget in total. That's just a question I'm trying to understand from each department. I might have forgotten one or two, but that's what I'm trying to accomplish. Thank you.
Mike, do you have that answer?
I don't have that answer, but I can, I can get it for you.
Okay.
Thanks.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, for the first time in my six years, just as far as page thirty-two here goes, I'd like to talk with the department head. It's the latest budget I've seen. I can propose no cuts here at all. And to answer Counselor Bacon's question on this one, it's a four percent decrease.
Well, I'm just looking overall, not each page. Yeah, yeah, yes, thank you.
Anyone else for thirty-two? Can always go back, don't worry, but I just want to make sure we get to all our guests tonight, so. Off to thirty-three. Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, on overtime for city property, can you explain what might be an example of how overtime is used for city property?
So city property, it includes our Building Maintenance Superintendent is Mr. Crass. He's in the Supervisors Union, so he does go on-call regularly throughout the year. His on-call would come out of the overtime, and if he has to respond to anything, it would come out of the overtime. If we have, we have two custodians at City Hall. If one's on vacation, let's say Papo's on vacation, we're going to have to have somebody cover a later shift. That would be overtime. If there's any events at City Hall, the overtime would come out of this budget for those events. And then there's also the Building Maintenance Man and the one laborer. If they incur any overtime, it would come out of this budget.
Thank you.
Counselor Anderson Burgos?
Yeah, I'm looking at line item or object code five one one zero four. And I noticed that there's about a little over thirty-eight thousand dollar cut and for laborer.
Yeah, so
Can you tell me how that's going to impact your department?
We have one laborer now. I requested an additional labor, so I requested two. But one was approved by Mayor Murphy.
And tell me what, what services that you would provide to the city that that would, it would be not possibly not potential?
It would be an additional body that, that Building Maintenance, but also DPW would have to do our work. So this labor, the guy is, he's a, he's like a utility guy. He, he does a lot from mowing the lawn at City Hall and other places to repair and maintenance of buildings. He's, he's very busy, and he's the kind of guy that we can, we can throw anywhere. Even if there was a, like a road job that we needed some extra help for one day, we could take him and put him there.
Well, it seems like he's a multitasker.
He is, yeah. He's like a utility guy. He's not just a custodian. But he's also not a carpenter and electrician.
So you were looking to have two of those type of gentlemen working for the department, am I correct?
Correct.
And now you only have the funds for one?
We have, well, we have one today.
Right, but the discrepancy that I see here between the seventy-eight and the forty, that, that leaves you out one?
Well, I was asking for another one, who doesn't work for the city right now.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Counselor Tomlin?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mike, can you explain the five two one zero zero, the streetlights? I thought we had an issue with that with the gas and electric and the cost or something was supposed to be lower. Four hundred thousand, is that, that way you figure?
That's all we had figured for, for running the streetlights in the city.
For the whole year? Now, it's even with the, the energy efficient lights and all that stuff, just the costs are going up?
Yes.
Yeah, and how was that built out? Is that like quarterly or monthly, or?
No, it's monthly.
Okay, you just got a statement or a bill?
We get one big bill from gas and electric that's about forty pages long, that has all of the different streetlights. They're all metered, so it's actual usage that we pay for.
Okay, and well, I mean, with the summertime, I mean, you're not, they're not on as long, right? I mean
They aren't, but then there's the winter when they are on.
That makes it so you're paying more, okay. And is that like on a budget, or do you pay whatever the bill comes, as they come in?
We, we pay the bills as they come in. So as you alluded, in the summertime, the bills are, are lower than they are in the winter. And we get, one good thing with gas and electric is we always get the ten percent discount, even if we're a month behind paying.
Well, that's good. I was wondering about that because I know the average homeowner gets have to pay on time and just one of the, you know, so you are saving something there.
We always do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Tomlin. You know, this is my favorite one every year.
I know it is, yeah.
So, Mike, the, we only spent three hundred sixteen thousand in twenty twenty. I know that we were having to make payments on the upgrades to the lights that were supposed to start saving us money. If I'm getting out of your wheelhouse here a bit, I'll be glad to go after, you know, the HG&E on this one, but what, at what point do you know that we actually start to realize those savings?
Yeah, it's outside of my wheelhouse.
Okay, and just to remind everybody, last year, I believe we cut this one a hundred thousand dollars. That brought HG&E to the negotiating table on their pilot agreement, to which for lack of a better term, I guess Acting Mayor Bloomberg negotiated a horrible deal for the city. And this is one I think we should revisit again with HG&E with some new people in place next year. So I'll be looking for some savings here, and that's something I think we can accomplish either through a real deal that recognizes what the pilot should be, and we should hold some back in reserve, given what we have to do for budget cuts this year.
We, according to Munis, so far this year, we've spent three hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars on this line.
I get that. We did the same thing last year, though, but we need to, we need to do a better job with all of our pilot programs. And if we can get more money in on the revenue side, that'll, that'll offset it. And I think this is one way of making sure that it comes back in front of us again as the, as the year, as the fiscal year progresses.
Anything further for?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Counselor Graney?
Yeah, just quickly, I don't know if I'm in the right area, or if it's the Parks Department that this would be under, but just a question on the lights at McKenzie Stadium and Robert Field that haven't been used for a year because of the pandemic. I don't know if that falls under the, under the DPW or the parks and rec, but there should be some kind of a savings there, I would think. I don't know, Mike, if you could help me with that.
I'm not sure if parks, I need to check and see if they have a, an energy. They do not, well, they have an energy, gas, oil, and electric.
I think I can answer that if you'd like and save you some trouble. Those lights are all metered separate, and for example, the different softball leagues and people that use it do get a bill for using them. They're not part of the, this line item here, which is just streetlights.
Excuse me, through the chair?
Yeah, Counselor Graney?
How about Counselor Sullivan, is that, is that true with Robert Field and McKenzie Stadium too as well?
It's true of McKenzie. I would think it's true of Robert's also. I can't say for certain.
We can, we can get an answer to that, Counselor Graney.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
At McKenzie, if I can, I know people using it, if they're using the lights, they pay, I believe, an hour at least feet when the lights are but I think that just goes right back to the general plan.
Yeah, it might be within the contract when you do the renting. But Counselor McGivern?
Yeah, we, when we did Robert's Field, we, we asked that everything would be metered separately as McKenzie, you know, McKenzie was first the Millers and now the Blue Sox. So that they can be charged for exactly what they use, which, which is what I believe the city is doing when it comes to streetlights. We're being charged for what we use for electricity, and therefore we pay our electric bill. Is that right, Mike?
That's correct.
And I'm sure it's the correct electric bill, because I don't think the gas and electric is fudging that. Mr. President, is this, we including page thirty-four, or are we going to same department?
Yeah, we can go right to thirty-four. It goes to thirty-three, thirty-four.
I just have one question, Mike, on page, our page thirty-four, but it's fifty-two, five, one, zero, the repair maintenance for central fire. You requested over twice what was in the budget last year, and you received fifty-seven, five, which is still twenty, twenty-seven thousand dollars over last year. Can we have an explanation for that, please?
Their main boiler at Fire Station Headquarters is leaking. It's been leaking for a few years now. We've tried to make repairs and seal it the best that we can, but it's like, it's a modular boiler, and it's leaking from the seals between each module. The state is, you know, allowed us to continue using it as is, but so this extra cost would be replacement on that boiler.
Well, this is not for replacement. This is repair and maintenance. Replacement would be capital outlay.
Fair enough.
Sorry, but you know, I'm all in favor of replacing the boiler, but it's not that old of a boiler. Do we have any recourse other than having to replace it ourselves?
No. We've tried to go after warranty, but it's not covered by warranty anymore.
Who, who put the boiler in?
It was for my time, and I don't, I should know it, but I I think it was when the fire station was built. I'm not sure who the I think it was, it was when the fire station was built. I'm not sure who the subtrade was.
I think we might want to, uh, find out who it is and let the world know. So would it be okay if we cut this line item accordingly to the replacement cost? And what would you really need just for repair and maintenance?
Uh, I mean, probably in the thirty-five to forty thousand range is what we would truly need for fire station headquarters maintenance.
Thank you.
Councillor Sullivan. Uh, hold on, Councillor Graney, Councillor Sullivan, then Councillor Graney.
Uh, sorry, Todd, I had left it up.
Okay, Councillor Graney.
Yeah, just quickly, I hope that this isn't a hazardous situation, Mike, is it? That, that boiler?
Oh, well, uh, it, it's a, a, it's going to be at some point in time. It, it'll, there'll be a time where they don't have hot water.
Then this has to be something ASAP that we can get, get fixed, isn't it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mike, go ahead, Councillor Murphy.
Yeah, just, I mean, I know not only Mike, but the fire chief has made that a very clear, uh, request that this needs to get done ASAP. So, uh, that, that's why it's there.
Mike, can, can we just go through the numbers? It, it says seventy-five, it was dropped to fifty-seven, fifty. Is it twenty-seven, fifty is what we're saying for a brand new boiler system in there roughly?
Well, I, I was thinking it was in the thirty to forty thousand dollar range for a new boiler in connection for the size of the, uh, the fire station. If, if you're to cut it out completely, since it's a capital improvement, not, uh, repair and maintenance, then, uh, if you could keep our final budget in the thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar range, um, then we should be able to get through the year without too much heartache.
Councillor McGivern and then Councillor Bacon?
Yeah, just, just to be clear, I, I'm not against replacing the boiler by any means. Um, it's just, it needs to be capital outlay or the auditors will, will kill us. You know, and it's, it's only, you know, I'm not sure it's a honest mistake, but it's just, uh, capital outlays, capital outlay, not repairs and maintenance, maintenance. And the, um, the, you know, I'm not sure if the mayor knows, but would, would the American recovery dollars would disqualify for that?
Councillor Murphy?
I'm not sure, but I'm thinking probably not, but I'm not sure. And I, and I know the fire chief was meeting with Alicia leave earlier this week to talk about all the things that might be eligible, so they were working on that. But I, I'm not sure this was included.
I would, I would agree with Mayor Murphy. I'm not sure, but I don't think it would.
And I disagree with the federal government though, not neither of you. I, I trust both of you, but what the federal government is doing to this country in terms of, of relief through, uh, after a year and a half of a pandemic makes no sense at all, the way they're telling us to spend the money that they're giving us. We, we, we need help right here in this budget. We need help in just daily operations and keeping, you know, we, we're trying to avoid layoffs. We're, this, this is the first time we've faced layoffs in probably thirty, thirty years. And yet the federal government is, is throwing money around and not, not looking at the true needs of municipalities, especially older cities and gateway cities in the Commonwealth like, like Hoyok. And I, I, I hope our congressman understands this and I hope everybody that's dancing up and down about the monies that are coming into, into the, uh, into the municipalities, into the states is great. It's not. This is a sin, what's going on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councillor Graney.
That money could be used, uh, for the boiler is through the revenue replacement portion. Uh, because the, the revenue, uh, would go into the general fund essentially, and you could allocate from the general fund to any project that you want to.
And we're three weeks away from July one and we don't know what the procedure or formula is for revenue replacement.
No, we, we, we've gotten an update on that and we are working on trying to get the calculation and get it approved.
Councillor Bacon, you're next.
Thanks. And I should know this, but I just don't remember how old that boiler that we're talking about is. It didn't seem like it was that long ago. How many years has it been?
Fifteen.
Only and I never remember.
I'm sorry?
The fire chief did tell me and I'm
Oh.
drawing a blank.
Fifteen to twenty?
Has it been that long?
I think so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I know we're talking about numbers here that are relatively small. We have such a huge problem in the budget. It's hard to get our arms around this year. That's for sure.
Yeah, wait, just to touch on this, maybe it is in the wrong area for how to deal with the boiler, but as Councillor Murphy or Mayor Murphy said, I, I sat with the chief as well i- in the head of maintenance and this was put in last year. We were told about it during the budget cycle last year and it was going to be done correctly. And unbeknownst to us, it was cut by the former mayor.
Oh.
So we, we heard in the meeting, we were all for it and then it got removed. So when they came into the office, when I took over for my short tenure and then I related over to Mayor Murphy is that it, it's in dire need. Uh, they couldn't express that enough. They really need this done. Last year, they were able to really limp it forward into this year. They're not sure that they can do it again during the winter. So it, it, it is of great importance and it's not something that we did wrong. It was cut unbeknownst to us. So however we can shift the number into the capital outlay and get that updated, I would highly recommend that simply because it isn't, it, as I say, it's a large number because of the main issue, but it'll get even larger if it falls apart during the winter. It'll be more costly is my point. Anyone else for, that was thirty-three and thirty-four because they carried over on each other?
The, the plans, the plans for the fire station were dated in the two thousands.
Okay. Thank you.
February two thousand, so.
Right, so to thirty-five? Councillor Sullivan?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, please. Uh, Mike, can you, uh, tell me on item five, one, one, oh, six, the, uh, property maintenance and demolition worker? Um, that's, that's been cut. Is, is somebody not been hired now, uh, or is there going to be a vacancy for a while?
No, that position was, uh, filled two weeks ago. So we do have somebody in that position. Um, I'm not sure why it was cut, but the, we would need that full, full budget.
So right now we've hired a guy at fifty-four thousand and we've only budgeted thirty-nine?
Yeah, I would need to make a transfer in order to make that whole.
Um, um, Mayor Murphy, could you help us with that?
I was under the impression we're having a hard time getting somebody and at that point I was saying, when do you think we're gonna? We weren't really sure. So I kind of budgeted three quarters of a year.
Okay. And Mike, the, the labor position, we never had that before?
Correct.
That's, uh, one brand new position?
Correct.
And what would that person be doing?
Uh, well, the laborers are the utility guys. Um, we, they can do anything except operate equipment or drive, uh, trash trucks or the big plow trucks.
Okay, so what, what is the utility guy?
Well, I'm just saying he can, he could do a bunch of different functions, um, for DPW. He could be on a sign crew. He could be painting lines. He could be, uh, filling potholes. He could be installing berm. He could be working with John on trees. Or she, he or she. That's what I mean by utility guy.
Okay. That's, that's my only questions. Thank you.
Can I offer a thought on that too?
Yeah, Councillor, Councillor Murphy.
All right. And again, I, Mike asked for, I think, five or six different laborers. I tried to do them in tr- in trash collection and highways and bridges because that seemed to be where we end up having the most potential shortages. And I, I think, I think it was five or six total laborers that he was asking for. And obviously I was somewhat limited in what I could do. So that's what I try to do is try to pick one in, in here, one in trash and one in highways and bridges that I know he said could be move, movable or provided when we're short in another area. So we're not ending up getting, um, back, back to love. And if I can just offer one other comment on the, on the demolition worker, just as of, uh, and this is another reason I ended up cutting it. As of June first, we had only spent nine thousand six hundred dollars this year. So, uh, because we hadn't had the person in, and so at that point, I was still assuming we weren't getting anybody at that particular point.
That's understandable. Councillor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I, I hear you on the issue of laborers, but if the history and maybe I'm not a hundred percent correct here, was at one point in time, the DPW decided to hire only people who have a CDL license. And that kind of eliminated laborers. Because the, you know, for the, to pay for a laborer, you're not going to find someone with a, that qualifies with a CDL license that probably is going to want to be a laborer. So if we're adding the laborers back into the budget, are we eliminating operators?
No. No, this is an addition of a position.
And how, how are we going to get, how, you know, I'm, I'm trying to be the devil's advocate here because you know, in a week or two weeks, I'm not sure, Mr. President, we're going to be looking at, at cutting the, uh, cuts to the budget proposed. And people are going to see all these new positions. So how are we gonna, how would you justify this? You know, from last year's budget or from the last, uh, several year, several years budget?
I would, I would justify it because I'm constantly asked to do work that I don't have enough people to do the work. I need more people. Uh, we, we often use our drivers as laborers because there's, there's a lot of jobs where uh, you don't need the CDL license to, uh, to do the work. So if, if I'm going to add staff, I would rather add staff at the bottom.
Which, what was proposed to us years ago was, you know, to add operators to the budget, but eliminate laborers. And now if we're going to add laborers back, I, I guess, maybe I'm not asking this correctly, but does that mean we're reducing somewhere else? I understand why you're doing it, Mike.
Yeah.
It's, it's a budget thing.
No, I'm, I'm not reducing staff anywhere else. I'm purely asking for additional staff.
So leave it up to the city council how to reduce the budget?
Yes. I mean, I, I can't get, I can't get more guys if I don't ask for more guys. I need more guys in order to, to do the work that we have to do out there. And
How many employees are on workman's comp right now?
Four.
And what's the average been all year?
Uh, five, but well, let's say six. And not all year because it wasn't.
Five and a half?
Sure.
I'm Sevens President. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I'm following up a little bit on Councillor McGivern because one of my questions was going to be, how many people are out long-term in your department and is some of this an effort to try to replace people that you anticipate will not be returning to the workforce? Um, and then my other question is, and I'm, I'm not really seeking a concrete answer, but I would just let you know that lots of times when people, or I'll say sometimes when people call down to DPW, the response they get about things happening is that there's a lot of people on vacation. The impression that people get is that there's a lot of people off on vacation at the same time, like during a school vacation, things like that. And so there's a bit of an impression that has developed in the community that there's not necessarily consistent coverage, um, and smooth sort of distribution of staff hours. So I'm not asking you to answer that question. I'm just sort of giving you that feedback that I've been getting from residents, um, because I do think um, if there is the ability to tighten up on smoothing things out like that, um, I know we all like to give everybody time off when they want it. Um, but we have to make sure we have adequate staffing to meet the operational needs and those of us who deal with personnel get that. Um, so if we're trying to maybe be too nice, sometimes we might have to take a look at that. Thanks. But are there a bunch of people that might not come back at all, are you thinking?
Uh, there are some who, who could retire. There are some that are working through their, um, their injuries with the therapy to come back to work. It, it's a mix.
But maybe half of the six?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone further for thirty-five? Thirty-six? Is the equipment maintenance? Councillor Bacon?
Thanks. Um, I just have a general question. This is definitely not in my wheelhouse, but uh, it seems that we've bought a fair number of pieces of equipment and autos for the department and I thought maybe part of that goal was to reduce repair and maintenance costs. And I'm not seeing that evident here, so I'm just wondering.
So I, I, we had a, a budget of eighty thousand dollars last year, this current fiscal year. I'd asked for eighty thousand for this year, even though we did get, uh, some new vehicles. Uh, they haven't arrived yet. They'll be getting here somewhere around the middle of the fiscal year. Um, we still have our other older vehicles that continue to get older and, and still need maintenance. The, the vehicles that are being replaced are out of service right now. Um, so that, that's why I asked for the, the same amount.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Chairman?
Councillor Graney.
To follow up on Councillor Bacon's question through the chair, what do we do with those vehicles that are out of service? Is there a possibility to auction them? Do we send them to the junkyard? What do we do with them?
Uh, we, we do auction them. When, when they've been replaced, when there's, uh, no, no opportunity for them to be used anymore, uh, we will auction them and then that money goes into the general fund.
Money goes into the general fund. Do we have an accounting of that?
I can, I can get you one.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, off to All right, off to thirty-seven. Counsel Sullivan.
Yeah, um, I'd like to take us back to page thirty-six for just one minute.
Sure, sure.
Mike, uh, five, one, one oh six, the, uh, police fleet mechanic. Is there currently someone in that position?
Yes.
Okay, that, that was my only question. I didn't know if the just the position had been vacant for half the year and all these new vehicles coming in with the police department. All right, thank you.
Right, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Uh, Mike, on, um, expense, uh, fifty-two, nine hundred on the, um, the landfill is, is that the true cost? And I just wondered how much was spent this year in that. I know the costs are increasing, but that just seems like a high number. The six hundred and fifty?
Page thirty-seven.
Yeah. Uh, it's, uh, this year, we're, we're projecting to spend six hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
How much?
Yeah, that is, that is, uh, it's expensive.
Right, and, and, uh, has it gone up since, from last year? Or is it, was it about the same last year?
Yeah, it did go up a little bit, um, per ton from last year. Uh, I, I think it was, it was a couple bucks per ton. I don't, I don't have the actual figure.
Is there any way that we as the city or as residents can sort of conserve or do something to make that cost a little bit lesser?
Yeah, if, if the city did a, a better job recycling, if people composted, um, it would, it would reduce the tonnage that we bring to the transfer station.
Yeah, so you, you base this number on the tonnage that you bring in from the previous year?
Yes, yeah.
Right, because I, I, I just know we've heard a lot about people staying home and using more and buying more and, um, you know, it seems like the trash was even more that heavier. So I, I'm just looking at this year, hopefully with people starting to get back to work. There may be less, you know, refuse or less trash. Um, I'm just wondering if that's an area that possibly the council could cut a little bit.
Uh, I mean, I know my budget's six hundred thousand and I had to make a, a fifty thousand dollar transfer in.
You did last year?
Yeah, for this year, for our current year.
Right, right.
Our projected, uh, cost. We're averaging fifty to sixty thousand dollars a month.
Okay, but I mean, I'm just saying as the year goes on, if we see there's less people are doing a better job and there's less trash, or people are working and they're getting out more, they're not staying at home, um, you know, there may be less tonnage, right?
There could be.
Okay, that's all. I'm all set. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Bacon?
Um, yes, just to follow up on the, um, trash and recycling comment. In general, I thought we were doing fairly well with the recycling, um, in the residential arena. Um, but that part of the problem was where we used to gain revenue from recycling. We're no longer able to do that. So are you saying that even though we're not making money on the recycling, if we had a higher percentage of participation, that is still costing us less than the trash?
Correct. So we never really made any money on recycling.
Okay.
Just that the rebate was higher. The money we're getting back from the recyclable material had a, a higher value years ago, but it was still a net negative for the city in that we had to have equipment and labor in order to collect the recycling. Then if, if you look at, uh, the cost per ton of recycling versus the cost per ton of trash, um, that's where the big difference is. So if, if trash costs eighty-five dollars a ton and recycling costs forty-five dollars a ton.
Okay.
For every ton of recyclable material that you can pull out of the trash, uh, there's the savings there for the city.
Okay, so how much more do you think we could reasonably accomplish in the city based on how we compare to other cities on this?
Uh, so I, I think there's always room for improvement. I don't know, uh, the actual percentage of, we would have to do a study. We would have to, uh, dig through people's trash bags and try to find what percentage, what weight of their trash is plastics or uh, glass or paper that could be recycled. And, um, and from there, we would know how much better the city could do. It's never going to be perfect.
Right, I'm, I'm, it's just my impression is that people are doing a pretty good job of recycling. I mean, we had a lot of demand from people needing and wanting bins and barrels and, um, that's just an impression. But I mean, it's hard to get a measurable, but if we're being told if we did better with the recycling, it kind of implies we have a lot of ability to do better. And I'm just wondering.
Yeah, I know we can do better. Uh, I know, uh, trash collections have been up, but also recycling collection has been up.
Okay.
Particularly with cardboard, uh, with, uh, all of the Amazon deliveries.
Right.
Hardboard recycling has, has increased this last year.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Sullivan?
Yep, um, Michael, uh, line item five, three, one, zero, zero, the other services. Uh, what, what is, what are, what are these other services?
So that's, uh, the cost for our transfer station here. That's the cost to dispose of the mattresses, the electronics, the tires, the, um, uh, construction debris, furniture that people bring in. That's also increased. Um, and one of the, one of the initiatives that we've talked about, uh, at DPW and also with city council would be to go to a pay-as-you throw type model for our transfer station. So instead of having, uh, four tires for free, uh, every year, if you wanted to dump off four tires, it would cost you four dollars a tire. Or if you had a, a flat screen TV, it would be ten dollars for a flat screen TV. Um, so much for a mattress, and so much for a truckload of construction debris. The concern is that if we do that, uh, it'll wind up in the alleys.
In the woods.
In the woods. Uh, but we, we are getting a lot, a lot of usage of our facility here. And it, it does have a cost to the city.
That's a pretty high, pretty high cost.
It is. It's where we're constantly emptying these dumpsters.
Yeah, and we are charging some fees on this?
Uh, we, we, we charge fees for renters to get a refuse disposal card. Um, and if someone wants to add, like, let's say you get two mattresses per year. If you have a third mattress, then there's a fee. There's another ten dollars for that third mattress.
Yep. Okay, and, uh, as far as electronics go and stuff like that, um, we used to have an outfit in Hoyok right by Western Mass older care that recycled electronics. I, I think they took it all for free. Is that, that's gone or it doesn't exist anymore?
That's gone. Uh, it's a person of, uh, North Central Mass who's taking it now. He's taking, uh, our electronics and our freon containing items. He's, he's giving us, uh, a credit on the freon. And there's a charge for, uh, the, the electronics. They're also taking the mattresses. We did have a, a grant from the state where it didn't cost us anything for mattress disposal. Uh, that grant has expired.
And there, there's no, is that grant, uh, gone for good or is it something we've got in the process, uh?
A grant to get a mattress recycling program started in a community. Uh, it was supposed to be valid for one year. Uh, we had it for two years.
So we can't count on it for a third, you're saying?
No.
Okay.
But if we went to a pay-as-you throw type model.
All right, thank you.
Anyone further for thirty-seven? Mike, can you send us a list of that breakdown for throwaway service? You know, two mattresses, third one cost X, two TVs, third one cost X. Just so we can look at that.
Are we able to really track that? Well, it would seem hard.
In, in what way?
Like, if X person brought down two and the X person in the household, but I don't know, it just seems like it would be a hard thing to track.
It, it is a little bit. So, uh, we have the refuse disposal card. Um, there's supposed to be one card issued.
Okay.
Um, so, uh, if, uh, but with renters, since it's, uh, um, multiple apartments in a building, then there's multiple parts. Um, but if, if, uh, if I had, uh, I'll use my father-in-law as an example. Again, he owns a, a house on Beach Street. He lives in South Hadley. Uh, he could use his refuse disposal card from his house on Beach Street and get rid of tires in a refrigerator, two mattresses every year in Hoyok. Um, because he has that card.
Yeah, yeah. Still, it's better that it's going where it can be controlled than being dumped all over the city, hopefully. I mean, it's a catch twenty-two. I guess. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Counsel Grady.
Just quickly, just as an aside, for years three, the top five, five hundred fortune companies in the top ten have been trash companies. Browning Ferris Industries and a couple of others. It's unbelievable the amount of money that the trash generates. These people are all multi-billionaires.
Next is going to be page thirty-eight. And that's parking facilities?
Are we collecting any money these days?
Uh, we're, we're collecting some on-street. Not from the garages yet.
No?
We had an, an issue with the vendor that we were using for, uh, tracking of the vehicles coming in and out of the Dwight Street Garage. They changed their operations after COVID. Uh, so now we have to figure out how, how we can exist within their model, or do we have to go outside and, and do something else completely?
That's the second or third one, right?
Yes.
We're not having good luck with these garages. Do we have other options?
Uh, we, we could, we could go to pay stations. Um, the, it's just the, the concern with pay stations is the vandalism. And the, the equipment cost is, we'll say thirty to fifty thousand dollars for, uh, a piece of equipment. And someone in a, in a couple of hours can do enough damage to, to cost the city another ten thousand dollars in repairs. And, and they'll get fifteen dollars out of the machine. So there, there are other options. We're exploring, exploring. I do want to get back to charging for the garages as soon as we can.
Could we make it permit parking only?
Uh, we, we could, but that's not really part of the intent of Dwight Street. Dwight Street was supposed to be both permit and transient parking. People who would be coming into the city for, uh, that way would go to Dwight Street and not park on-street because on-street parking is supposed to be a two-hour max. That way, there's more turnover of those spots on the street for the downtown businesses. We, we want the long-term parkers to go to the garages.
Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. Uh, Mike, just on the management fee, how did you pay the, the vendor?
Uh, for the, for the Dwight Street Garage.
And Suffolk, and then didn't they collect all the money for the meters?
No, we collect the money for the meters. Uh, we, we had a, a license plate reader system at the Suffolk Street Garage that we were doing as a, uh, not as a trial. We, we piloted it. It, it seemed like it worked, um, where it would read the license plate of the vehicle coming in, put it into a check versus a database of, uh, monthly parkers or transient parkers. And then, uh, at checkout, uh, if it was a transient parker, it would calculate the amount of time that they were in there and they could, they could pay at a, a kiosk with a, a credit card. Uh, it was a cashless system. Uh, at the Suffolk deck, we have the, uh, um, the same old hourly parking.
On, on top?
On top.
Both though, right?
Uh, down below, it, it's, it's all monthly parkers on the lower Suffolk deck. The top was more for transient parking.
Who, who was collecting the money for monthly?
The, uh, the city was. Payments would come into DPW and we would transfer them over.
And is there still an app for up above?
Yeah, the app is still working for on-street and up above.
Isn't that the company out of Amherst that they get a percentage or?
They get a, a small percentage. I don't, they're not out of Amherst. They're, they're somewhere in the country, but they're nationwide with the Park Mobile.
And the, the, uh, cleaning maintenance, so there is no management company now? It's done in-house?
It's not in-house.
Thank you.
Counsel Bacon.
So is the license plate reader still being used or was it just a trial and, and?
That's the company who changed their model.
Oh, so they're no longer running that? So, so is, is, is their model now not compatible with what we need for the city at all?
I'm try, I'm trying to work through that with, with them.
Oh.
They, they wanted to change it to a, what's called a gateless system. Um, and there's other, uh, fees and, um, fines associated with that.
Oh.
I'm trying, I'm trying to get a, a better understanding of and see if we can get those reduced. They just seemed out of line for what, uh, Hoyok would, would tolerate.
Oh, all right. So overall, are we getting half of the money for the parking that you thought we would get? Or some percentage less or more than that at this point?
Yeah, at this point, we're still, we're not collecting that much money. We, and I need to do more work. We and I need to do more work in order to get back in line with where we were pre-COVID.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else for thirty eight? Any other questions for Mike? Any pages we missed for him? Forty eight?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Questions on forty-five?
Silly question if I could, Mr. President. I think I know the answer, but water and sewer. Halfway through the year, you only paid one seventy-two?
That one seventy-two doesn't look right because we would have had spray parks last year. Yeah.
I mean, I'm just thinking we got that deficit in the sewer and. Might be ourself causing it? Just kidding, Michael, just kidding. I take it that we're. Pretty consistent with that high forty, fifty thousand dollar mark for both.
About, yeah. This year. This year, we are going to have the pool, yeah, pool in operation. So that that could add to our water and sewer. But we'll. We'll take it as it comes.
And the employees, the lifeguards?
Those are in.
And I heard they're all filled.
They seem to have been able to get a lot of people still.
I heard Kevin Jordan's coming out of retirement.
He is.
For lifeguard Peter.
Oh, I thought for council.
You can't say that.
Anyone else for Michael?
If I can just make.
Counselor Murphy.
Regarding the pool, it looks like the pool is going to be opening up on June twenty eighth. We are planning senior swim as well as open swim, so. Anybody check with the recreation department, they can post the whole schedule. I think they're going to be posting everything shortly, but I just got the announcement today on twenty eighth. They'll open. Most of the water sprays should be opening, I believe, by the eighteenth. And there are some operating now, but. So we're looking finally to have a pool that's functioning. It's been seven years. Livy and I know about that. So I mean, Counselor Hernan, sorry, Livy. We know about that. So anyway, I just want to let you know that's coming and and it's good news and we haven't been able to get a lot of lifeguards and they're actually trying to. Expand the senior swim in the morning because they've had a lot of seniors that have done it. And we think that the man's still there, so.
Counselor Hernandez.
Yes, hi, to the chair, to Counselor Murphy, yes. So happy when I read that. And as to the lifeguards, are they doing the hiring typically, like the interviews are being done through Park and Rec?
Yep, it goes through Park and Rec.
Okay, thank you.
That's great news.
Anyone further for DPW?
There's page forty-seven.
Page forty-seven?
The War Memorial Commission. So we, you know, the city owns the building or at least maintains the building. We have two custodians. There's nothing really.
Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, special about that. And then. On page forty-eight for the exhibit hall. That's another where it's just expenses for the city. There's no labor associated with that. The building does need a new roof. It's not included in this budget.
What's the cost for the roof? Estimate.
Yeah, I'd say fifty.
Any questions for Mike while we got him before we release him?
Fifty-three.
Oh, fifty-three, Mike?
Not much for wastewater, but we can, we just get wastewater.
If I could, Mr. President.
Counselor McGivern.
Just on the War Memorial Commission, Mike, when it's rented out. Is the money collected used to offset these costs?
I I don't know. I I don't know if that money gets deposited in the city's general fund or if it stays with the War Memorial Commission. I think it does get deposited into the general fund and talking with Chris Sims a while ago. My recollection is that he does hand the money over. But it it's not like it comes back into my budget.
No, no, that, you know, it has to go, you know, be available for next year or. But just knowing that it's collected, like the parking meters. A lot of cash being collected and you have safety precautions on whoever collects it.
We do, yeah, it's a. It's a team. And supervisors go to make deposits at the bank. They're watched at the bank.
Counselor Tallman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Mike, just going back to that page in the War Memorial Commission, you. You you have two custodians, a senior building and a building custodian?
Correct.
Okay, because I I'm just looking at the number and I requested seventy-four thousand for one employee. So was that a typo or?
No, I had asked for an additional custodian.
Oh, so you were asking for two?
I was asking for two. We have one employed now. I was asking for an additional one.
Okay.
And what what's there would pay for the one that we have now.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Are we, are we on fifty-three now?
We're on fifty-three now, yep.
So I have a general question.
Sure, Counselor Bacon.
So, Mike, we have how many years left on the contract?
Four.
Four, so. And I know that contract is unbelievably long and complex. Do we have? Anybody looking at it from the point of view of renegotiation? The options that we have at the end of it? Other than, you know, simply continuing it year to year, I mean, do we have? The capability of really getting our arms around this and making a. Good deal for the city. I mean, I know they've done a lot of capital investments. But they've got to be making a lot of money on it too. And so I'm just wondering, because it seems very complex.
So we we do have a couple of years left. The city has the option of extending the contract by five years. One time. There is, I don't believe there's a provision to go to a year to year after the contract expires. Believe that the city would have to. Go back out to bid. For a contract services, because it was a twenty year contract with the one five year extension at the city's discretion.
Right, right. And so I guess the other part of my question is not knowing much about that world at all. Is it a competitive world? I mean, when you're getting to the end of this contract. Are there multiple companies that would bid for this kind of work or is this sort of like a? One per country kind of deal?
Springfield Water and Sewer just rebid their contract. I think they had two, two interested parties. Looking at their forbidding.
Alright, so.
It's a very small world. It's a very niche market.
That's what I suspected, just given the nature of it, but.
And Suez. Is consolidated with with another company, so it's getting smaller.
And I mean, I'm not criticizing their work. It's just. It is a really huge expense that we have. And I mean, I understand all of the history of it.
Right.
But.
A portion of that fee is the debt service on the Berkshire Street treatment plants.
So how much? Okay, that and that's showing in this figure.
That's showing in that in that big number.
Okay, so that's a pretty important thing to break out because you would have that no matter what.
Well, at the end of the twenty years, you wouldn't have that cost anymore.
Well, I mean, we would have it now, but we wouldn't have it later, right?
Unless we were to finance another sewer separation project.
But we will have to, right?
We'll, we'll have to at some point in time, the long term consent decree. Long term control plan hasn't been finalized, accepted by EPA. Where we're getting through Jackson Street now, that's going to finish this year. So the following fiscal year, fiscal year twenty-three, that's when we'll see those bond payments start. But the the next project isn't for a number of years after that. We've been doing a lot of the the design and groundwork using grants. That we've got through the Connecticut River Cleanup Fund. So those costs aren't being borne by the the ratepayers. For our long term control plan and. You know, I think as as long as we show that we're making progress and moving on it. Then EPA and DEP are happy.
Okay, so I guess, so then it's pretty important for us to understand what is the long term debt portion and what is the management? Portion and then to understand from you, I guess, not this year right now, but. Sooner than later, which way you think is best for the city to go, the general direction, right?
So the service contract, it's labor, it's electricity, because wastewater treatment is a very large electrical usage. There's chemicals, sludge disposal is a is a big cost. There's a, there's a lot of, you know, big numbers that go into our service fee.
Right.
And yeah, as as we move closer to the the date where we either need to extend the contracts, which we can do at any time. We don't have to wait until there's a few days left. Contract.
Yeah. I guess we'd just be interested in, you know, in your guidance and expertise in terms of. Which way we should be looking to go. If we have more than one choice, sticking with the one we have because. We're happy and it's competitive and before we're like put in a corner at the end of the line, right? So I'm I'm happy that you're already looking at these things so that we'll hopefully be able to be proactive. Thank you.
Going out to bid, it's not a a two month process.
Right, I would, it would be big, a long process, right?
It's a one year process, so.
Okay.
Getting ready and going in.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tomlin was next.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'll be, I'll just be brief. I believe, Michael, we had them in last year. I don't know if it was in finance or DGNR. They talked about the contract and about the possibility of extending it. And even I think there was some like. Credits that they were giving the city if we did extend it. Is that true?
Yeah, it's so. They would be able to adjust the amortization schedule for the long term debt. And reduce their annual payments and they would. Shift those savings over to the city. So also, one of their budgets is for capital improvements of the plant. Where they they figure they're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars a year. Part of the. Their proposal would would be to eliminate capital improvements for the rest of the contracts. And they would provide that as a credit to the city as well.
Right, and and I know we talked, we actually talked about the contract too, and it's like. It's like a binder that I think it's about six inches deep or bigger and have somebody look at that. I think the cost was. I don't know, well over a hundred thousand dollars just to review it, so. You know, I know there's something to think about and there's always an option that is there a better way, but. I I know part of the whole thing is and I I know all my colleagues realize that the. And nobody wants to raise the sewer fee, but that's one of the things that we're in big deficit of in the in our budget is the sewer fee. So that's something that we have to look at and I don't know if they're trying to move that over to the DPW commissioners or. If there was an order about that, because we used to, we used to do that. So maybe that's something that, you know, they can look at and analyze. You know, maybe in a step by step increase slowly, because the last hit was a a huge one from. Whatever, a dollop or somebody gallons to five something, five thirty-six, so that's. It's something that we have to think about and and I and I know that, you know, under your guidance and. And we can have Suez again and with the finance to try to find out what our best options are in the future. You know, because as as Counselor McGivern said, it's a federal mandate, but we're stuck with the cost and unfortunately. You know, it's it's difficult to to pay for the cost, but we have to do what we can to make it, make it work, so. But I'm looking forward to hear from Suez again in the future and and I know they did state that we we were there several years ago, but maybe. Some of us have another tour of the facility to see actually what actually happens and and what is paid through or through the the contract, I think would be. Would be important for the council, so thank you.
Counselor Sullivan.
You're on mute, Mike.
There you go.
For either Michael or Mayor Murphy. Any of these federal mandated. Programs or. Capital improvements that Suez has to do or. Is there any chance accelerating construction, stuff like that, and using funds from the AR American Recovery Plan, the money we have coming in to do this? And in effect, not only for this budget, but reduce some of the costs going forward?
I'll I'll start with, Mike, you go ahead. I know you're putting something in.
Yeah, so we're. We're we're asking for money to advance our current projects. The. Design of work, but from what I've heard, you can't, you can't use the funds, the Recovery Act money. To cover debt service. You can't use it for. Enterprise fund deficits. You can't use it for projects that are already under construction. Where you already have identified the funding sources for. But something like the, in in Springdale, in the Springdale section of the city, there is a pond. And that pond overflows into the sanitary sewer. We, we can install a new pipeline for that pond overflow that would go out to the river. Uh we, we can install a new pipeline for that pond overflow that would go out to the river. Uh and the construction of that project could be funded through uh the Recovery Act.
Yeah, so a- as a, for example, that's gonna reduce the amount of water they, and we. Pay by the gallon what goes through there with Suez, right?
Yes and no, uh so our our contract with Suez, there's a a set fee. For operating the treatment plant, and that fee gets adjusted every year by a multitude of CPIs. But there is an annual true up on the additional loads. That we send to Suez above what our contracted loading amount is. Um so, yes, uh this additional water could cause uh additional loading to the plant. That the city would have to pay for at the end of the year, it also could cause overflows within the uh the sanitary sewer system. Um which, while we don't have to pay for those, it doesn't look good when the city uh has sewer overflows.
Alright, so basically, the doing this work um. It re- it reduces that. If we go over the amount, we have to pay, so it it eliminates the possibility going over, but if we come under, there is no savings.
There is, there is a savings in the loans.
Alright, and are there other projects that we could do under the ARP also that would reduce?
Uh yeah, uh so uh one of the, we we have a an allowance. Within the contract every year for sewer repairs. Um and with the ARP money, we could do uh the preventative maintenance, the rehabilitation of our sewer collection system. Before we have those catastrophic collapses of the sewer.
Okay, uh but I see for. Is there a line item for that separate, or is that part of the overall contract?
It's part of the overall contract.
Alright, so the by utilizing, but the bottom line is by using some of these ARP funds. We could reduce that contract amount with Suez next year. Or or we wouldn't be able to get the projects in line fast enough?
Correct, yeah.
And a- as far as that goes, we have to use that money within two years also, right?
I think it's four, Mike, yeah, it's four, four years.
Yes, but the first batch of it, the clock begins ticking on that right away for two years, right?
But I do think, I do think you do have, even though you're awarding it and everything, I I still think that you have the four years of having that money. I mean, obviously, you wanna move and get it done as quickly as you can, but. I I believe there are all the money, even though you're getting two batches, or two, they have a different name for that.
Tranches, two tranches of funds.
There you go, uh I I do think uh you do have four, I can try to get a clarification on that again, but that's my understanding.
That's my understanding too.
So on the first trench, we'd have four years, and then the second one would start, it'd be four years from that, so.
Four years for everything, that's where I understood that. So the second trench is next year, but that would have to be done by two thousand and twenty five.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Mister Chairman, Mister President?
Counselor Granny.
Just quickly, maybe it's an unrelated item, maybe it's not, with the Water Department, the ARP money. Uh already, the uh the Recovery Act money, would any of that be used for for the Whiting Reservoir Project? The dam situation up there?
Let me try to, I don't know, I don't know what specific, I know the Water Department is putting in a proposal. I don't know, like, and I'm, I'm not really sure if that part is part of it. Uh but I know they have talked about putting in a proposal on some of the work that they're planning. But I don't, I don't think it was related to the reservoir, but I'm not.
Okay, because I was, I was concerned, because it's it's both an environmental issue and it's a. You know, it's it's a project that's uh, it's definitely needed, and I know we've been talking about it for several years. Just wondering, I just was wondering, that's all.
And it might be, uh Counselor Granny, I ju- I just don't, I know they put, they are putting together proposals, and what I basically have asked, and Lisa's asked. Is that every proposal, just kind of put your priorities, what's the most important thing to get, next most, and then we kind of work away from there.
Okay, thanks, um, Mayor.
Now fifty three goes to fifty four, just as a reminder, Counselor McGivern.
On fifty four on the depth service, potential interest, Mike, I I I kind of know what refunding is, but. There's only years with the refunding line items, can you remind us what projects these were?
So I don't, I don't know which projects they were, but that was uh. Uh Sandy and Bellamy, they rewrote some of the bonds to get better rates. I don't know, I don't know which.
That's that, that's okay, I can find out through the Treasurer's Department. I just should know by year, but it's, it just kind of threw me, so I used to think that the project stayed with the, even though when it was refunded. It was still called by the original project. But it's good news, because it's always better rates, not worse. Thanks.
Alright, anyone further for Mike?
Can I just ask one more general question? Um so, Mike, I know I'm jumping ahead on this a little bit, but um. When Counselor Tomlin was talking about the presentation by Suez. And they wanted, it sounded like they wanted to stop making capital improvements. Under the contract, and if I'm understanding that correctly, and I do remember at the beginning. They had to lay out a lot of money for those big turbines or something that had failed. And I'm just, I'm a little nervous if they don't want to make capital improvements. Because of our city limitations in being able to make those, and I thought. Um if I'm remembering correctly, that that was like one of the big benefits, that they had the deep pockets for that kind of thing. So am I understanding that correctly or not?
Uh you are, there would be a uh a capital improvement limit. So if the cost was less than twenty five thousand dollars, Suez would would pay for that improvement. If it cost more, the city would be on the hook for the difference.
So they're really looking to limit their liability that way then, in a big way?
They are, um. And that, since uh, since we had met with the with the council. Uh we have done an asset evaluation analysis of all of the city's assets. And the the assets are in a better condition now than when the city handed it over to Suez. Uh so it it kind of lends itself to say, if we were to uh remove the requirement. For capital improvements above that twenty five thousand dollar threshold, that the the risk for the city would would be limited.
Okay, alright, so the savings might be worth it, so, alright, thank you. Thanks.
Alright, if there's nothing else for Mike and DPW. Um thank you very much, Mr. McManus, for being here tonight and going through all this with us. We appreciate it, if there's anything you can, or something does come up, please reach out to us and let us know, and we'll have it ready. The for, cause Joe brought up, we are scheduled for the June twenty first for the budget meeting for. Uh cuts or dealing with the budget, uh that was on the schedule. At first, it was the twenty second, but I think there was a conflict, so it's the twenty first. Um reminder that we moved the ninth to the sixteenth in order to allow public service to meet last night. To deal with the HR position and the interpreter's uh position, uh uh for the council, the interpreters. So that was taken up, so we moved last night's budget to the sixteenth, that'll be the final budget unless we need something before the twenty first. With that, next on the schedule was um. Because remember, we changed our rules to not have the budget. On the same night as a full city council meeting, because I think one time we went till almost two AM. And then the next night was almost midnight, so we we kind of changed that. So with that, um next is, I'm reading. HR, but I don't think there's anyone from HR, because we still haven't hired someone, so it would probably be best to. And we'll just follow up with them prior to the twenty first, if there's any changes, Counselor McGivern?
Hey, can I ask the mayor a question, if I could?
Yeah, absolutely, sure, if you want to do it that way, sure. Page thirteen, Counselor Tomlin.
Not a big deal, but repairs, maintenance, office equipment. Nothing was spent this year, are we, you have two thousand five hundred eighty five dollars in there, which was in two fiscal years ago. You know what that is?
It was something that was coming, I know that, and they were spending, hang on one second, let me take a look at somewhere else and see if I can get you.
Can I get the object code, please?
That is two uh, page thirteen, five two four zero zero, five two four zero zero.
Thank you.
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, would, I did have something doing a a copier or something, a printer they, that they were gonna be using, I think. Something that they had, and then it was getting replaced, and it hadn't been replaced, but, and I'm not, it's.
I know Lori was in the process of doing new copiers. Uh multifaceted, multipurpose ones for some of the offices, because the other ones were either dead, couldn't be repaired, couldn't find the parts. And at first, they were looking for lease programs, and that didn't work out, and this might be the the new multifaceted. Uh printer, copier slash whatever.
Is that a capital expense, though, again?
Leasing would be under expenses, but purchasing one would be capital.
Well, we can, we can follow up, I I'm thinking that's what it was, don't quote me, because I remember that was in a discussion.
I don't have an answer for you, Counselor McGivern.
That's okay, we, like I said, it's minor, but I was just curious, we can uh. We'll give Lori a call.
Yeah, I know, I know when they talked about it, it made sense.
Lot of details.
Alright, so I know Tuesday will be taking up the personnel person, we can always move them. Uh have them on ten delivery for the sixteenth, seeing how they'll just be taking over the role if approved. If that works for everyone, and then we can get a follow up as to Counselor McGivern's question by Lori, anytime before then. So moving on from HR, going to uh billing and codes, I believe it was next. That's twenty six, page twenty six. And Damian Cody's here for that, how are you, sir?
Good, good evening.
Good evening, we'll turn it over to you, just any updates you want to give us, uh anything that might be different, or. That you're looking for, just kind of like what Mike had in the beginning.
Uh there's not much different, um we have one thing, but I think it's not different, because last budget. It was changed, so the other contracted services is also covering the money for the weights and measures. So we're in a, I guess you can call a transition there, since um. We're using the state, so that's eighteen thousand dollars comes out of that, so uh even though overall the budget. Might have creeped up a little bit, it's just actually another expense coming out of this department rather than another department.
Okay, uh any questions for um Damian? Page twenty six. Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, thank you, uh Mister President, uh Damian on uh line five one 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 zero, the local inspectors. You asked for two? The reason for that, and the the mayor gave you a one?
We, sure, yes, I did, I asked for two, so we've had one full time funded from the city. And one position funded seventy five percent from block grant money and twenty five from the city to offer the flexibility for. Uh a work that's not approved through that uh federal money. And I asked for two, because we've had the position open for over a year, I'm thinking almost two years, I, some of that due to. Uh the shutdown and COVID and all that, but also, uh we just haven't had very little luck. Um attracting anybody to the position, so I thought one thing that we could do is. Get it off of the federal money, which adds some restrictions. I think it's a little bit intimidating when somebody sees the criteria. Uh so that, that's why I asked for the full funding, which it was cut, so we're back to where we were two years ago, which is just seventy five percent, twenty five percent.
Okay, and one more question on the uh expense line, demolition of unsafe buildings. Um you asked for two hundred thousand, and you got eighty thousand, is there something other money being used, is that part of a? A bond project that we're work, looking at, the mayor's looking at possibly, for the buildings?
Uh that that could work, um you know, historically, we use four hundred thousand dollars a year out of the department. And I, you know, I didn't want to budget this based on this last year, again, of the shutdown. And there's a lot of, when it comes to demolition, that that can be funded through a lot of sources. Um and so we project, and one thing you'll probably hear from from Sean later. In the Board of Health, is that the vacant building registration money has, is going down, and so to our credit. Uh that means that these buildings, uh there's less that are registering, that they're actually being rehabbed, or they're just being taken off. Which means we're generating uh less of that income for that, for that revolving fund, but with that. Um we're losing out on about a hundred thousand dollars of uh money a year for demolition. So that's why I asked for more out of this this line.
Okay, so you're saying some of these buildings that we're paying into that fund, uh some are being rehabbed, they're taken over by um landlords or whatever.
Yeah, one way or another, either either uh they are getting into a plan, is in most cases, they're getting a an acceptable rehab plan and starting some work. Uh it's a lot of effort on the city's end, or you know, the departments to to sort of babysit these and push people, but. Uh if they give us something and they're working on it, even if it's slow, they they get out of paying that. Uh three thousand dollar a year fee for commercial properties, so uh in residential properties pay into that. Uh Sean could touch on it later on, I think he's he's on today, so.
Okay, and and I know previous years, we've had issues with uh wire and plumbing uh inspectors. So we got two solid people not working there in the those positions?
Oh, I, yeah, absolutely, um there there isn't a a month that goes by that I don't think about, uh so our new electrical inspector. Uh is is probably the best I've ever known, um I think the the increase in pay made a made a big difference there. Um and you know, he's sharp, haven't had a single complaint, and I think been with the city over a year now. Uh great feedback there, and and plumbing and gas inspector for a couple of years as well, so uh I think we're, we're good, we're good for a while.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh Counselor Granny.
Yeah, just quickly, Damian, on that same line item, the order grant, uh the eighty grand. Uh could you just give me a brief update on the armory and the status of the armory building?
I only heard the second half of that, I had the train going by, so y- you want an update on the armory?
Yeah, just a quick update on the armory building, the status there, because that would come under that line item, I will add.
We have no, no plans, nothing, it's not in the queue for demolition, for sure. Um we did a lot of work to keep it intact, uh it's come up a few times. About the monuments, just a reminder to everybody, we did have those removed through a grant, uh through the Veterans Department. In the city, and and we worked it out, they're down at the DPW, I believe, at this time. Um so it's just, it's there, I know that it's been marketed on and off through economic development. Um and that, that's, that's it, I mean, until somebody, uh perhaps in our monthly meetings. Uh, perhaps in our monthly meetings tells me differently, we're, we're not, we're not doing anything with it, but keeping an eye on it.
Okay, thanks, and the roof is, the roof is still intact?
I have, haven't heard anything to that contrary of that.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes, thanks, um, Damian. So, uh. Coun- Counselor Murphy and myself have proposed to, uh. Put some, uh. Bonding money together to, to do things, uh, accelerated demolition, and I hope Mayor Murphy has got that on his desk now.
I, I'm expecting you're gonna have it on your council agenda on Tuesday.
Yeah, now, if, if that goes, i- if we get going on that, would that reduce the need for some, I know you use some of boarding places up and. And things like that, but would that eliminate the need for all of that in there if that bonding went through?
I believe, uh, it, it has, it definitely has the potential, it depends on how it's. How, how you guys, um, I guess write it up, because. Uh, for example, you know, back to the other line item, the other contracted services. Uh, with, with the need of me spending the money to pay the state for weights and measures. There's only about seven thousand left, and that, that pays for the third-party contractor, for the, uh, you know, Forbes and Wheeler. And to do work that we can't do in-house, and those can be three to five thousand dollars each, those contracts for every project, so. As long as it's not, I guess, the demolition bond money's not worded so specifically. That it has to be for a particular, uh. You know, for demolition only, or for particular property, it has flexibility, it should work great. And we would only use it for what's, what's approved, but I guess my ask would be that it's, it's pretty open-ended in terms of demolition purpose.
Yeah, in, in my mind, any demolition contracts would include remediation and inspection and anything else that goes along with that. Removal of, uh, whatever the structure is.
Yeah, I'm just not that familiar with bonds, uh, I think I've only worked with one large bond before, and I, I know they could be hand, they. Potentially are handled differently to meet the requirements for procurement, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Murphy, yeah?
Yeah, and, and thank you, Dan, Damian, I, the list I'm working, and I did in the bond proposal, I was specific in terms of. Damian had given me, uh, Mr. Cody had given me, uh, seven buildings and. Uh, then I withdrew, cause one of them had been sold, and, and there's another one in potential. So I took the la- the five other ones, and they're part of that bond, uh, and we've been told that I needed to be more specific in terms of the bond, so. Uh, so just, so you know, that's coming in, and that should be coming to the council on Tuesday. Uh, and then the other thing is, we, we, we've put a hundred thousand in, in demolition from community vote, so. I think that, I'm pretty sure that's still there. So, if, if I could, uh.
Yep, Counselor Sullivan.
Counselor Murphy. Uh, at this point, with what you've got, advances to the mayor's office, do you think we'd be safe to cut, uh? You know, leave something in there, but cut a substantial portion of it?
I guess that depends if you pass the bond.
This would certainly put some pressure on to pass the bond, wouldn't it?
Well, hey, I gotta, I gotta have some kind of pressure.
Thanks.
Anyone else? No, Damian, you're, just so I don't miss a page, you're just page twenty-six?
Yeah, I, yeah, and it, this year for sure, I, I know in the past, if I scrolled down one, it would have the. Uh, income after it from our, from our fees and everything, but I see that's.
It's missing, yeah.
That's, it's just, so, nothing you can cut, just gives you the estimates.
Do you have those that you can send over to Jeffrey and then get it out to us?
Uh, not in this format, I, I mean, I, I run those numbers myself every year, and I am working on a, on a report. For the last three years, which will cover a lot of the, uh. Uh, a lot of the comparisons, so. Uh, if you give me a couple of weeks, I can, that, that'll be out anyway, it'll, it'll go through everything.
Okay. Alright, so any further questions for, for Damian tonight? See none, well, thank you very much for being on with us tonight. If you have any updates that do come up, or that report, you can send to Jeffrey, and we'll get it out to everyone. Uh, once again, June twenty-first will be the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, good night.
Next is Sean, from the Board of Health.
Hello?
Hey, how are you? We'll just turn it over to you, uh, we get to our page, and then. Any updates or any reports, and then we'll get into the budget.
Um, I mean, I, I guess I'll just, for continuity's sake, I'll just take up what Damian had mentioned earlier, uh, the revolving fund is. Sort of, um, well, I mean, it, it's achieving its purpose, which is reducing the number of vacant properties, um, but. You know. Because of the work we've done over the last really five years intensively, I, it, it went on longer than that for me, but in the last five years, it's been really, really productive. Um, and I think the relationships that we've made with a lot of these property owners has. Gotten much more communicative, and, and, and so. In many cases where there might have been three thousand dollars collected, because there was a failure to act on the vacant building notice. Um, now there's a rehab plan on the books, which is, in my mind, excellent, right, that means that the property owner is. Investing in their property, is working with the city, um, but that also means that, uh, the funds that go into the revolving. Fund are significantly reduced, so right now, there's a little less than thirty thousand in the revolving fund, that's not on the budget, it's not a, a line item in our budget. But, um, just as an update, that's where it's at. Um, we will be putting some liens on from, um, the vacant building period that had just happened. Uh, there was a delay in those liens, because, um. Our office was a little preoccupied with COVID, and the law department, um. Is, uh, they're a little busy at the moment, so, um, those will happen, but it, it will be a much smaller, um. Take than it had been in previous years, uh, we had. A pretty significant surplus in there before, because we had applied some of the years of the vacant building fee retroactively. And so that built up a large amount, and then it's slowly just been, um, brought down on, on. Really a lot of the demos, uh, you know, taking down some of these properties, remediation, uh, waste removal, sometimes twenty or thirty thousand dollars that are properties. Um, the building on High Street that just came down, which I think has really cleaned up that corner. Um, and is, is really, I mean, it, it's sad to see the building go, but it, I think it's done a lot for that, that area, you know, that was about thirty-five thousand dollars. In, in waste removal and remediation, so, um, it goes faster than it comes in at some points. Um. Other than that, as, as for the budget, um, what I had requested was a fairly level funding, um. The only increases that I had requested were the two percent. Increases that we are advised, advised to include on personnel line items in anticipation of the new. Um. Personnel contracts coming in, so, uh, that was there, um, at this point, um. Linda, I know you had asked for sort of proportionate to what it was last year to this year, so. Um, we're at about ninety-three percent of last year's, um, budget. Uh, the, the largest difference here is that one of my unfilled positions was not funded. So that was about forty-five thousand dollars in requested salary, and that's what brought it down, the rest are just some small. Um, cuts to the expenses. I did not propose any new expenses this year, just sort of a maintenance of, of what we had last year. Learned it's sort of difficult to predict what's going to happen year to year in the public health, so, um, I, I kept things the same.
Thank you.
Counselor Sullivan?
I, I can't, I can't wait till we get back to in person, so.
Well, you yell at me when you're in the corner, and you say I don't call you, cause I can't see you, so at least I'm seeing you here, so. Counselor Tomlin.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, uh, Sean, on, on some of the expenses here, I'm looking at, um. Like the supplies, emergency help, uh, i- if any of these expenses, um, can be utilized through the, any of the COVID money that you received?
So, you know, like the emergency help one, um. That's not just for, it, the, the. How do I answer that? Perhaps, but, um, the idea about having that emergency help line item is for unforeseen. Um, expenses, and if they're not attributable to COVID in some way, or if that COVID funding is. You know, the, the state of emergency is ending on the fifteenth, and if that funding, uh, dissipates or is ended, then we will have no. Money, uh, set aside for emergencies, so, um, I had sent an email, for instance, um. A few weeks ago about like the mosquito control, um, and if we were to have to pay for services like that. You know, having emergency, uh, health money set aside. Would be what we would pay for, that's not COVID-related, COVID expenses would, would not touch that if we had to pay for. For instance, a hypothetical spraying.
Okay, a- and getting on that, I think a lot of us, I'm, I'm a little confused on it, but on that spray. Is that something that the city's gonna do, or is not gonna do, I, you just have to sign off?
No, so. Um, what the state was saying there is they were providing communities. An opportunity to opt out of the spraying program. And that yes or no decision is only relevant in the case that there is a mosquito. Born illness emergency, so it's, you're making a decision about a possibility that only exists. Uh. Hypothetically, so if there were to be a huge triple E outbreak in the state. The state would spray in areas that were affected, and were that to happen. You could choose now to opt out of that program and provide your own, uh, spraying program. So it, the decision yes or no may never be relevant if there's not a mosquito-borne illness outbreak. That's, that's what that was about, it was a preemptive decision to, to do your own control, should you want to.
And, and if, if we did the, our own control down the road, let's say next month or August, then, then we'd have to pay for that out of our funds?
We, if we had opted out, which we did not, we.
Oh, you did?
Had to, yes, um.
Okay.
And it would have been much more expensive than, you know, the state does it for free, if it's necessary, which I, I. Don't anticipate that it will be, there have been some drought conditions, and so they're hopeful that the drought conditions will have, um. Will reduce the amount of mosquito larvae this year, which would bring down your triple E, your West Nile virus, arbovirus issues. Um. And so I, I'm hopeful, but even when there are mosquito-borne illness issues, in, in recent memory, all of the spraying that has been done has largely been. Aggregated in the southeastern part of the state near the shore, um, and, and, and out in Western Mass, it's very rare, they, a few years ago, they did some spraying. In Western Mass, it was, um. Far enough away that we would not even have been in the range where it would have flown into Holyoke, so.
Okay, okay, thank you for that, it's confusing, I've got the emails, and I was reading about it, and I was. Opted in, opt out, I just was confused about that, but, uh, thanks for explaining that to us. Appreciate it.
If I can.
Yeah, Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, and, and Sean, I, when that came up, uh, Counselor Tomlin, I also reached out to, uh. Sean, and Mr. Gunsol was in, Mr. Gunsol, I forget it, Sean, don't worry about it. Uh, and, uh, you know, he, he explained that we went through the whole process, and, uh, you know, that's why we. Did not choose to opt out, and, and the potential cost, again, where are we gonna get that, and the potential of having to have it is, is pretty minimal. So.
Okay.
Um, yeah, he gave it advice, and last thing I wanna say is. I mean, I've been nine weeks with him, as we try to get reopening and all the other things, and I will tell you that he's done. An admirable job, uh, trying to prepare the city to stay safe, but also to reopen, so I wanna thank him publicly.
When reopen. Thank you.
So, on page thirty-nine, are there any, and, and forty, Kerry's over, any questions for the budget? We know the one is five, one, one, oh, nine, which was the two positions, but really you filled that one. Anything other than that?
Todd?
Counselor Tomlin.
Yeah, I just caught on, uh, on the second page, and a telephone usage charge. Is there a reason for that, going up five hundred?
I, I don't, I did not request an increase there, I'm not sure why that went up.
Mayor?
Hey, you just had me close my book, Peter. What, which one are you looking at, Peter?
Page forty.
Five, three, four, one, zero. Page forty, the telephone usage?
Yep, I'm just trying to see what, if something sparked, uh, an increase here, hang on one second. Usually would be as I get the reports of what has been expended, and I see that being escalated. Uh, and then the advice is that that is the trend, so that's probably what it was.
Yeah, cause I, I thought at one time they were coming out of, uh, the purchasing department, and the money was.
Well, yeah, things, yeah, things are being. They are being no longer centralized as much as they were.
Okay.
But I, I'm not sure that's really the issue there, and, uh, I'm just trying to see what the, uh. So the revised budget for telephone usage, we've already spent about forty-one hundred dollars.
Oh, so it's already over the three thou- okay.
So that's why I increased it, um, you know, obviously, he's, he's had a lot more. Phone calls he's had to make in the last year, so obviously. But I did try to re- reflect that, uh, in terms of where they were at, and then trying to come back to a real world this year, and hopefully it's gonna come down.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone further for Sean?
Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sean, have a great night, great weekend.
And, Mr. President, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna leave there, so.
No, not a problem, Counselor Murphy, thank you very much. Uh, the last one is veteran services, but we did get an email, right, and I, I spoke with, um, Jesus Pereira. He sent an email, it says, uh, the Hoyle Veteran Services Department has submitted our. Uh, fiscal year twenty-twenty-two budget proposal to our auditor, March fifth, twenty-twenty-one, which. Was subsequently forwarded to Mayor Murphy for review, my proposal budget was five hundred fifty-six thousand, three twenty-two. Including a reduction in expenses categories, including education, training, office professional services, in-state travel. Uh, veterans patriotic events, uh, education training was further reduced by the mayor. In his proposal by an additional five hundred, Mayor Murst, he also added three hundred to repair and maintenance, uh, office equipment line. Uh, if you have any, uh, seek any further reduction at this time, I respect your request, you consider the veterans benefit direct. Which could be, uh, reduced by twenty thousand dollars. If you have any questions, you can contact him, uh, and that's the director, Jesus Pereira. So he said you may look at that line item by twenty thousand. And, uh, I forgot to give the code, I apologize, that is.
Five, seven, seven, zero, zero.
Yep, five, seven, seven, zero, zero.
Right. And it looks like the expended for the six months was one seventy-one, six twenty-four, so.
So if there are questions, you can always reach out to him, or, I mean, whatever the pleasure, but I know, uh, uh. Conflict came up from him, but he wanted to get something over to us for the budget.
Great.
Any questions, uh, Councilor McGivern?
If I could, just, uh, more of an informational question, um, so President, I, I believe the school department is on our next meeting on the sixteenth.
Yep.
And I, I know it's not always ready, but, uh, two, two pieces, bits of information would be helpful this year. Uh, one, if their budget is been finalized, I know the school committee doesn't vote on it anymore, it would be nice if we got a copy of it. We don't have line item control, but my real question is, I'd, I'd like to see a breakdown of what our net school spending. Is gonna be for last year, and what happened this year. There's been a lot of changes, I think, in formulas that could impact us either way. Um, you know, between monies coming in and monies going out, and I, I, I'd like to kind of hoping that it'd be in, impacting a positive way. For a year, but, um, it would be nice if we had a breakdown on that school spending, finishing this year and what we're expecting next year. I was trying to get the mayor's attention before he left us, but. Listening.
I'll call, um, Mr. Soto, Anthony Soto, he, he's, he's very good, he's been very good to us, and a sense of information.
He's been fantastic, I'd just like to make this formal, because it's kind of hard to ask next Wednesday, next, uh, Wednesday, is it?
Nah, uh, we're on a, uh, conference call this morning for the schools with regards to. No, I, we were on a, uh, conference call this morning for the schools with regards to, you know, the, the new schools, the MSBA type of stuff. And he was on there, so I'll just follow up with him tomorrow on, on this request.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone further? I know it would be schools, fire, I think council on aging. Um, HR, if we need them, the personnel department, but we still have to vote on the person. Um. So, and I know Terry kind of fills in on one thing and will confirm that whatever the, whether it was a new printer or not, but we'll. We'll get that, but there were no other questions on it. It looked like level funding across the board in that department. Alright, well, if there's none, uh, I'm gonna give you tomorrow off. Don't come in.
I missed the president. This was a little bit longer than our first hearing last week.
This sure was. I think the DPW took up the bulk of it.
Yeah, well, it's a, it's one, that police and fire.
I think Counselor McGivern, I think Counselor McGivern is talking about the moderator more than.
Well, I was not saying that.
I, I, I think, I think it was more, we had more really good questions this time. I was digging at it. I'm kidding. Thank you, Joe, for being there last time and everyone, um.
Good job tonight.
But I hope everyone has a wonderful weekend. I know it's been very. Be nice and mild out, just, but stay, stay cool and have a wonderful weekend.
Bye, night, everybody.
Good night.